I'd like to call the evening session of the September 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to Order. And as I forgot this morning, I won't forget tonight to announce about our six priorities that the Board has established. They are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And welcome to all of you who are here tonight in person. Good to see all of you, and we also welcome those who are watching on our live stream channel. Welcome to you as well. I do have a couple announcements. We had some board appointments that we had to vote on this morning, and I will go ahead and make those announcements now. For the Bentonville Community Building Board of Trustees, Joellen Beasley and Tony Ray Lee were reappointed for two-year terms. For the I-95, I-40 Crossroad of American Economic Development Alliance, Ryan Parker was appointed for a four-year term. For the Voluntary Agricultural District Advisory Board, Sonny Howard and Kim LaCire were appointed for three-year terms. And for the Johnson Lee Harnick Community Action Board, Dawn Wind Berdough was reappointed for a two-year term. So those are the appointments that we made, or we voted on this morning, and we'll move on to the agenda. And is there any need to adjust the agenda before we approve it?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approved the agenda, but we made to make a couple of adjustments to it, postponing case number 2506 to October 6th at 6:00 PM meeting, and then we need to add a closed session for this evening also.
I second it. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, we have public comments. We have our Human Resources Director, Paulette Williams, here. And we all talk about county employees as one of our six, and we have some preliminary and future county employees maybe. So Paulette, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Commissioners and our guests. Today, I'm honored to be able to present to you some of the interns that we've had for the 2024-2025 year. They represent about 12 different departments, and majority of them are high school and/or college students to some of our local universities. I will kind of go through the names of, and the departments that they represent. But I also want to ask, we have a representative from Next Gen, John Lawder and Kenya Smith also to talk about their program that they've also provided us with some interns if you all want to come up.
How are you doing, Commissioners? I'm John Lawder, a different tribe of lawyers.
Yeah, you spell yours right. Mine didn't spell so well.
I don't spell mine right. This is Kenya Smith. She's the Program Manager for Next Gen. I'd like to have her say a couple things first.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you all so much for allowing, inviting us to come. We are NC Works, with NC Works Next Gen. It's ran by Johnston County Industries out of Selma, but we're funded by Capital Area Workforce Board Development, and we provide eligible youth to Johnston County, or Johnston County youth who are eligible with employment training. And so we have a young lady here today who will be recognized for that work experience opportunity where she participated in with our program. So thank you all so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I'm the Business Services Specialist for Next Gen, and what I do is help kids who qualify to be in our program find jobs, decide on a career they want to be in, find jobs. And as part of that, we like to do internships that Next Gen pays for so that we can let them experience what a job in the field that they've decided to go into feels like. Internship typically will last for a summer if they're in school, or for 16 weeks if they're not in school and want to go straight into a career. We had two interns this summer. One was Chloe Sharp. She worked at the Ag Center, Johnston County Ag Center. She's under the weather today, so she couldn't be here with us tonight, but she did a great job with the Ag Center and represented Next Gen very well, and I think they probably, if the budget would allow, would like to have her come back when she finished school at NC State.
Looked like a big nod back there in the back.
Yeah. I'm supposed to do a budget plugs for all these county folks. And speaking of budget plug.
Very smart.
Ben Chapman's here from the Heritage Center. They need some money for an intern also. We've had interns working at the Heritage Center since I've been in this position for a couple of years. We've had a steady stream of interns going through the Heritage Center. And this summer, we had an intern that actually started off at the Ava Gardner Museum. Kate Spivey, I call her Katie. Katie Spivey worked for the Ava Gardner Museum, and she was actually doing her work at the Heritage Center and did such a great job and finished up so fast that they actually used her for Heritage Center work. So she kind of did double duty, worked at the Heritage Center and for the Ava Gardner Museum, and she's here with us today. She's a student at NC State, I'm sorry, ECU.
Ooh.
At ECU.
Oh.
I know. That was a pretty bad one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I had Chloe on the brain. I'm sorry. She's at ECU, and she made the trip up today to be here tonight. So Katie, we're glad you made it. So I wanted to recognize these two, and thanks to the Heritage Center and to the Ag Center for all the things they do to help us get people guided into a career.
Awesome. Very nice. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's give my hand.
Yeah.
All right. So our list of interns, Abigail Galagos, and she was with our Public Information Office, Hayden Gray with 911 Communications, Preston Gray with 911 Communications, Daniel Harmon with Cooperative Extension, Nicholas Howard, Board of Elections, Kalen Kyle, Administration, Emily Prickett, Tourism, Emma Scott, Administration, Joseph Snow, Technology Services, and Morgan Wells, Administration. In attendance today, we have Brishir Bryant, Human Resources, Jackson Honeycutt, Internal Audit, Clayton Johnson, Emergency Services, and as mentioned, Kate Spivey with the Heritage Center and Ava Gardner Museum. So if our interns don't mind kind of coming up and getting a picture with our county Commissioners.
Good. Yeah, I think we have some, a little bit of swag from them, then come up here and sort of be in the pictures. So they want to... Yeah, they sit there fantastic. Yeah. You take, you know, if I can take one after the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just sit there. Yeah, get them up.
Perfect. Yep. Yep. All right. Nobody blink. I'll take a few. I'll take a few. One, two. I'll take one portrait. Perfect. Good job.
Do you want to get one in the middle instead of from the side, or you good? Okay. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, take.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Somebody, yeah, we'll make sure these get distributed up here later.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But thank y'all so much.
Real quick, just for those watching, for others that want to potentially intern with our Johnston County government, can you tell them where they can find information for that?
Yeah, absolutely. If we have anyone that is interested in interning with one of our departments, certainly you could reach out to our office, Human Resources. Some of our departments are eager to have, you know, interns come on board with them. So I'll be happy to assist anyone who is seeking an internship and reaching out.
So these aren't internships that we necessarily offer. It's just an opportunity people can reach out? Or is it something that each department has an opportunity for?
Yeah, typically, the interns, we have some that will reach out to us directly, and then if a department had a specific position, they may have like a posting that would go out. But again, if they're interested, I would just encourage them to reach out. We may not have that opportunity available at the moment, but it may be something that we can look to see for the future.
Great. Thank you.
And for summer interns, when would those start to typically, what timeframe would it, if it was in the summertime? Like March, April?
Yeah, I would recommend, some of our interns that you saw here today actually kind of stay on board with us in a part-time, like temporary position, and so we have opportunities out there. And again, if someone is looking for a specific department or just looking to gain that work experience, and it's a good fit, we love to welcome at any point during the year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say as a word of encouragement to the young folks, and I don't know if I'd have been smart enough to listen when I was their age, but local government does provide a lot of opportunities. And I don't, like I said, I don't know if I'd have listened to somebody that told me when I was 20 years old, or 18, or 22, that to look into it, but it's well worth looking into. I know that a lot of folks who chose that path enjoy their career. We got one sitting right over here, two seats down, that enjoyed that. They retired a little bit earlier than the rest of us and pursued second careers and roles as Commissioner and other fun stuff like that. But I would say encourage all the young, to take a look at local government and the internships to see what's out there and maybe do something that you didn't think about doing, or wouldn't have thought otherwise about doing. So just encourage them all to take a look at that. And next year, if we can remember to get pictures of them, and we can get it on some social media and do all that fun stuff that folks do nowadays to promote our interns and thank them for the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, and Madam Clerk, no emails. Okay. All right, now I asked that one more. Anybody here for public comment on something that's not on the agenda? All right, then we will move forward with our public hearing on the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And we have Joel Strickland with McAdams here to present that information to us. Good evening, Mr. Strickland.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Thank you all for letting me be here tonight and speak to you regarding the Johnston County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We're glad to be here and toward the end of the plan and be able to present to you tonight. So we wanted to come to you and kind of wrap things up and tell you where we are with everything and give you a little bit of a recap. Obviously, we started with this vision, connecting the residents of Johnston County through safe and efficient multimodal travel options to destinations within Johnston County and the region while enhancing economic vitality. And again, this was really important, obviously, to hit safety first. So you see that on there, first and foremost, safe, make it efficient, make it multimodal to make this plan a plan that truly addresses all the modes of transportation. And then we really wanted to address destinations, first and foremost, within the county, within the region, and then look beyond from there, and then also look at how this plan could help with economic vitality. So we tried to address all of those key elements within this vision and within this planning effort. That kind of led to some of the goals that we've got here, and again, you see safety first and foremost to enhance the existing transportation network with safer facilities and options for all modes and users. Efficiency, again, to provide timely means of travel that reduces the user's travel time and vehicle miles traveled. Again, multimodal to enhance the county's transportation network with additional transportation options that provide users with multiple modes of transportation and improve on existing modes. Travel within the county, again, it was very important to enhance the transportation network within the county so that locations within the county would be easily accessible by multiple transportation modes and connected in efficient manners. And then looking outside of the county from there with regional connectivity to establish new means and modes of transportation servicing Johnston County and its surrounding counties. And then the last one here, enhancing economic vitality to provide a transportation system that supports existing economic vitality and builds new economic opportunities. So a little bit about the process of developing this CTP, this Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Again, we started with that CTP vision which we just talked about. We went from there to look at the needs assessments, assessment, which really looked at the current and future deficiencies within the county and looked at it again from a multimodal perspective, looking at the different modes of transportation within the county and where we felt like there may be some deficiencies, where there may be needs, and then trying to build off that with a series of alternatives. And with those alternatives, we were really looking at strategies that we could, we could use to address those deficiencies in a way that would minimize impacts to the natural and human environment and be consistent with the community's vision. So again, as we went about addressing these alternatives and addressing these strategies, developing these strategies, we wanted to stay within that vision that we had developed with our working group and with our stakeholder committee. From there, obviously, that led to our final plan where we are now. And then lastly, the last step of all this, obviously, is to adopt the final plan. A little bit about who helped guide and develop this plan. We started off with a working group which was led by Johnston County staff members. You can see that group here, Brastin Newton, Todd Marr from the Planning Department, Chandra Farmer from the Public Utilities Department, Adam Carroll from Public Information. That should be Chris Johnson from Johnston County Economic Development. And then we had Josh Jensen and Neil Davis from JCATS who also helped with the working group.
Chris thinks he got it right.
We have heard tell he could walk on water.
Everybody's moving around, yes, so.
We also had a stakeholder committee that obviously helped guide this process, and it was made up with individuals from various groups across the county. And you can see those groups here. We had representation from the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board. We had representation from the different municipalities within the county. And then we also had representation from Campo, NCDOT, the Riverwild Development Group, and the Becker Morgan Group. Again, all of these groups were very important to guiding the process, getting their feedback throughout the process, and getting their feedback on the existing and future transportation network in the county. So again, we didn't want to just come at this blindly. We didn't want to just come at this kind of unilaterally. We wanted to look at what had already been done in the region, what had already been done in the county, what planning efforts had already been done, and really build off of that and enhance that with this multimodal transportation plan. So you can see here some of the local policies and plans that we, we looked at and tried to incorporate into this. I won't read them all, but you can see some of those here. We cooperated with the town of Clayton and their CTP effort. A lot of that was ongoing during the same timeframe, as well as the Clayton Comprehensive Bicycle Plan. So you can see several of the municipal transportation plans. We built off of those and kind of tried to incorporate some of those efforts. Additionally, we looked at some of the efforts that Campo was making, attempted to build off of their planning efforts as well as the RPO in the area. We worked with them. We looked at the last CTP that was done for Johnston County and made sure that we kind of build off of that. So again, we didn't want to come at this blind, obviously. We didn't want to come at this from an angle that would contradict any planning efforts that had already been done. So it was important to us to look at some local policies and plans that were already in place and really enhance and build off of those.
Joel, can you hold on one second?
Sure.
So somehow I missed big red letters in my agenda, so if y'all didn't hear me, I actually opened the public hearing before he started talking, so proceed on now.
Okay. No problem. This here just kind of shows you the organization of the document and the layout of the document itself. It's basically in four pieces, starting off with the introduction and the overview. And again, this kind of lays out the purpose and overview, goes through that vision that we talked about along with the goals, our approach to the plan itself, goes through public input and some of the facts on that, selected project proposals, some project sheets, and then the approval process. Then we get into Chapter Two, which really talks about the existing and future conditions, looks at the public involvement summary, how we got feedback from the public and the role that that played in the process. Really looks at the groups that we talked to and the data that we got and the roles that it played in the plan. And again, we consulted with all of the local transportation, transportation agencies in the area, had really good meetings with them. And then Chapter Three was really the CTP project recommendations, where you can go see the projects, the recommendations, the ideas that kind of came out of this effort and that are being proposed moving forward. And then lastly, there you have some appendices, which really gets into the weeds of the data and the resources and a lot of the things that went into development of the plan. Some key statistics here that really helped in the building of the plan. We did do three rounds of public meetings. Those meetings went over really well. We also did a survey that was published for about two months. Between the public meetings and the survey, we were able to engage with over 1,000 people, which was great. We got, I think, over 3,000 actual comments back from folks during that time period. So we got a lot of really good feedback from the public that we were able to use and build off of in developing this plan. Again, the plan covers all six modes of transportation, so we're looking at bike, ped, obviously highways, transit, aviation. We're looking at the full gamut of all the modes of transportation with this. And again, we consulted with all the different agencies and all the different folks that we needed to, who were important in these different modes, to make sure that we were talking to the key players and the key stakeholders and getting them involved in the process. Coming out of all of that, we've got basically 170 miles of roadway recommendations in the plan, 88 miles of bike and ped facility recommendations. We have seven transit and rail recommendations, seven aviation recommendations, and 14 specific intersection improvements. I will mention with the bike and ped facilities, you know, a lot of the bike and ped facilities that you'll see in this plan are pulled from some existing plans that have already been done. But I will mention, obviously, the Johnston County Comprehensive Greenways and Trails Plan is also ongoing. So when that plan is complete, a lot of those recommendations will also be rolled into this plan as kind of an appendices or an addendum to this plan also. So what is different from the last plan or the previous Johnston County CTP that was done many years ago? I think you'll see that this plan is more consistent with recent planning efforts, including your more recent land use plan. It is less highway focused. Again, we wanted this to be truly multimodal, truly looking at bike, ped, truly looking at transit and all the modes of transportation within the county. And we really wanted it to cover the entirety of the county as well, especially the unincorporated areas, make sure that we were hitting the entirety of the county. And then we also have a digital map of recommendations. So you all, the public, you can go online, you can pull up the recommendations, you can get more information on those. You can see specific project recommendations, you can see the cross-sections for those. All of that information can be found and looked up online. Also, we did work on some ordinance recommendations. We worked with Mr. Newton and the Planning Department on developing these. Some highlights of those, we have some recommendations here that dedicate roadway frontage that is consistent with the recommended cross-sections for new location roadways, which is only about eight miles of recommendations. We have some information in there that ties into if, at the end of a roadway or adjacent to a previously constructed roadway or funded for constructed, construction, excuse me, the recommendation would be to build the new roadway. If a new roadway project is not funded for construction, then the recommendation would be to reserve the right-of-way. And then for greenways, it would basically be the same, except the, the recommendation would be to dedicate the right-of-way if it's not funded for construction. I know that sounds a little bit complicated, but the plan really spells it out well. But we really wanted to hit on the ordinance recommendations and tie into what Mr. Newton is doing and give him some, some information to really build off of for his land use plan moving forward also. So going back to these last steps of what is left, we talked with the, or presented to the Planning Board on August 19th and received their approval. So we're here tonight, obviously, for the public hearing and hopefully adoption tonight of this Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Again, we greatly appreciate the participation from the Commissioners. On the Stakeholder Committee, we appreciate the participation from the Commissioners in the public meetings. We greatly appreciate the participation and the help from the Planning Board and the planning staff throughout this process. It's really been a seamless process with their help, and we feel like we've got a really good plan for you all moving forward that, again, will address not just highway modes, or the highway mode, but really gives you a multimodal transportation plan moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Any questions for Mr. Strickland?
I've got some, Joel.
I've got some, but go ahead.
On the bullet point on ordinance recommendations, talk is about reserve the right-of-way.
That's my question.
What's the details with respect to what the court had decided in recent times about reserving right-of-ways or taking right-of-ways, that type of thing?
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of that.
You know, the court decided that in some parts of the state, landowners were forced to almost abandon their land because there was a taken right-of-way for some future project that was well in years in advance. And the court decided it can't do that. So how does this play into this, this recommendation?
Sure. So the recommendation would just be for, for highway projects, it would just be for reservation. There wouldn't be any dedication there, so it would just be the asking of reservation for it. So there wouldn't be anything that would prevent a property owner from still doing something with their, with their property. There wouldn't be any real limitations there.
Mostly just getting them to buy into the future.
Correct.
Okay. That was my question. It was like, so like if, if it was projected that a road would be three-laned or four-laned or whatever, but then a development wanted to come in just making sure, like would they still need to save that part of the right-of-way for, with the future or, and not build a lot on it? Or I was trying to make sure it was, all information was good and everybody was on the same page of expectations. I mean, is that kind of like what y'all were suggesting? Or I always say, I just want to make sure that whenever it's talking about the right-of-way that everybody's all on the same page, so we're not having an issue of miscommunication when it comes from developers. So making sure that if a lot can go there or a lot can't go there, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, so the intent here is to ensure that they reserve or dedicate land, right? So the difference is dedicated, it's absolute, they're going to turn it over, they're going to get dedicated to whatever entity, in this case, the DOT. Reservation is, we work with the developers to ensure that they have a design and they make a reservation on the physical plat, on that physical plan that shows that right-of-way, that there's no real development or obstruction there that's going to cost taxpayers additional dollars if that right-of-way, when that right-of-way becomes, becomes public right-of-way. Because obviously, there's a cost there. You've got to remunerate property owners for that land as DOT, here's that land for these projects.
Okay.
And again, we're talking about projects that, you know, aren't funded. So these are projects that could, you know, are still going to have to go through the prioritization process, still going to have to get into the TIP, so there's no timeframe on any of these at this point.
All right. Any, any other questions? I did have one. I know you had mentioned, I saw Campo participated in the DOT, the Upper Coastal Plain RPO. Were they able to participate in that as well?
Yes, sir. Jennifer Collins participated, and Mr. Sammons, who was previously at the RPO and went over to DOT, was also a participant. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? I know we got the presentation tonight and had a, had a chance to go through the whole plan, so my suggestion is rather than adopt it tonight, let's take the time and we can bring this up as an item on the next if we've got questions as we, as we look through it. I know, I want to see where some of those lines were and get more details on those lines and things, so.
And I'll also add, Mr. Chairman, we did get some comments back from Mr. Saylor about the rail, and those have been incorporated also. Yeah.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we did cover that. I was coming up to do that, but Joel put you to the punch. We did want to make sure that... We did want to make sure that we did incorporate those, as those are paramount to transit, rail development specifically within the county in the future.
Okay.
I did have a quick question, just more curious than anything. With the responses that you got from the public, how well-attended were the events? Would you say, in your mind, what was the average attendance of the three different public?
Yeah, I would say the average attendance at the public meetings were probably about 15 to 20. The vast majority of the responses we got back were via the survey. We had over 1,000 survey responses come back. Comments, like I mentioned, we got over 3,000 comments back.
Were those comments on the survey? Sorry, I'm asking more for our PIO and everything else, as we're trying to make sure our information dissemination is getting out. It's good to hear that you had a lot of feedback, and so I'm just, I'm interested to hear kind of where it came from and...
Sure. In fact, early on, we were struggling a little bit to get feedback. Adam's office, the PIO office assisted with us greatly on that. And that, we did like a second push with them, and they were instrumental in helping us get that feedback.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
One thing to note, before the board takes action on the plan, still open for comment. So the information is on our website, which is JohnstonNC.gov/Planning. And go to Comprehensive Transportation Plan near the bottom of that homepage, and you will see the map, which is interactive, and through that map, you can actually make comments for each individual identified project on that map. Or you can simply just email us at planning@johnstonnc.gov.
It's like you knew I was going to ask, where could the public come to this information?
He was this morning. All right. Any other questions from the board?
How long will the comments be live, so to speak, on the website?
It's live, it'll stay live.
Okay.
Until we make some substantive change.
Okay.
We'll have to bring it down to make that change, but it'll stay live.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So to go more from comments to this is, these are the recommendations of the plan or the outcome of the plan. And that's why they'll stay, we've removed the comment portion after a plan's adopted.
So this can be like, if some people believe that there needs to be a stoplight added or a turn lane or any of that kind of information, or is it a little bit different?
When it comes, so since these are project-specific and this is bigger picture, larger projects, things such as traffic warrants or signal warrants or intersections or what have you, they still can contact us, we can get that information to DOT to begin a study on those individual situations.
Yeah, I'm not an IT person, but I do think if I'm riding down the road and I come to an intersection, I'm like, golly, this needs a four-way stop or whatever, that there's a mechanism that they could go on and put that in the comment that we get and first have it documented for us for future updates, but also be able to forward it on. But I'm not smart enough to do that, so somebody maybe can...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to envision, something like that.
One thing we've tossed around in land use center is creation of an app that allows people to select or make, county-wide, so select an app, say, look, there's an issue here. It's at an intersection, particular intersection, or for anything. If it's, you know, instead of having to go on to, go to a website, get to a computer, go to a website and do it through that manner, through a portal, they can simply do it through the app. There are apps out there that actually geolocate. So if you're sitting somewhere, you see an issue, if it's something as simple as, and I think DOT has it as well, something as simple as a pothole or washout by a culvert underneath the road, they see it, they can report it. If they report it to us, we'll get it to the right place. But that's something we discussed is trying to develop, work with a company to develop an app that is real, which is live, real-time, and has geolocation attached to it as well. They're out there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Obviously, funding for this plan is a big question mark, and the presumption is that this is largely going to have to come from NC DOT, correct? What weight does this plan carry in terms of ensuring that Arneese and Johnston County are going to be included in what's called the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan?
Yeah.
Or the funding?
Anything submitted to the Strategic Prioritization Office for Transportation needs to be in a documented plan. So getting these projects in a documented plan is a key first step to getting that funding. So this is very important for the county to have this plan in place with these projects in it, and then you can turn these projects over to Campo or to the RPO and, you know, say, these are our priorities, and they can move them forward through that prioritization process to DOT to get that funding. Or even if you're going through the, you know, hoping to get grant funds for certain projects, it still carries a lot of weight to have it in a documented plan.
I had that same question, Bill. And I guess you can't get to the top of the list unless you're on the list.
Yeah, get on the list. But once you're on that list, who is the ultimate decision-maker? Is that the Board of Transportation?
Scoring.
The scoring process. Mr. Godwin's right.
Yeah, so you'll go, yeah, so Campo has a very sophisticated process and probably one of the best MBOs, I'm going to say the best, at figuring out what projects and how to weight projects to make sure, make sure you don't have 10 that fall just short in line. They look at the numbers and make sure, yeah, there's certain number that go above the line in the scoring and are most likely to get, you know. The trick for us is getting Johnston County's on there. There's been a lot of others, but I think this is the first step for us to be able to have projects and specifically identify them and start moving them up so they can get some points to be funded. And there's two, I guess there's really two pots. There's a state pot, and you've got a division pot, and then, I don't know, a regional pot in there too. And in Campo, we're the only one in Division Four, and I think one of the few is A or C, which, so we're in a unique spot. We're not competing with Wake County for dollars. We're in our own pool, obviously a much smaller pool, but we're a big fish in a little pond.
Identification in this plan as well for some of these projects will allow us the opportunity to apply for other alternative fundings through Campo per se.
Right.
LAP, CMAC, things of that nature. So that can help accelerate projects that are identified, or can help actually move projects to construction much quicker.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And it's more than just roadway, because there is a pot of money, and the Campo decides how the money's going to be spent percentage-wise. So there may, because we've identified greenway trails, that we may be able to get some of those done, because the pot of money's there, and there's not as many applications for that thing.
I asked this question, that was some of the questions I typically get from constituents about, well, I see the plan, but what is the reality here in terms of will we ever realize the things that are in this plan? Because, you know, there's so much funding involved in it, and you've got so many different aspects. You've got highways, you've got rail, you've got aviation, you've got foot and pedal tracks and that type of thing. Yes.
It is, like I said, I think this is step one, but I think it's a big step that, you know, we haven't updated since 2014.
2014.
So 11 years that we haven't updated. So I think that helps as well.
And some of the projects you see on there now are still, I mean, they were indicated in the 2014 plan as well. But some of those have been on the stiff, have fallen off the stiff, some are on the stiff currently and have had delays with funding, with start of the funding.
All right. Any other questions from the board before I let the public come forward? All right. Is there anyone here in the audience who has any questions? I figure that's what you were here for. So if you would, come up and state your name and your town or township for the record.
Okay.
And tell me which way's the sun coming in, in your eyes.
Right there.
All right, yeah, you want to take care.
I think it's way across the top there. I'm not sure you can close that far, but...
Maybe not.
Questions, but I've got actually comments as well, too.
Okay.
My name's Jeff Holland, and I am, I live in Clayton, just barely outside, so I guess I'm in the county as well, too. But I am here representing my forever home, and I want to introduce you to that right before I mention the transportation-related aspect of that. So we hope this time next year, we will have 10 homes up in a new subdivision that's being built right on the edge of Smithfield. It's called Family Landing, and it is right across, almost across from where the Amazon plant is. And so one of the things that's beautiful about that is that the homes are designed to give affordable housing for people with disabilities. And so that's the aspect I'm bringing to you tonight regarding transportation. And I'll be interested to hear, you know, if the plan addresses this in any way. I certainly did attend one of the sessions that was held at JCC. I think they had a lobby there that a lot of these maps were set up, and I had a chance to speak at that point in time, too. And so what I'd like to ask, ladies and gentlemen, is that we consider what's coming for folks like those with disabilities. As they move into these houses, we hope 20 folks will move into the 10 homes that we have, and they're going to need to be able to have transportation to shopping, have transportation to jobs, have transportation for further education, as well as, you know, the doctor's visits. We're aware of JCATs, but I think this goes beyond JCATs. And I think it's going to involve forms of transportation that I would love for you to begin to talk about and consider and embrace as commissioners, not only for this group and this population, but for others who just need transportation across the county for various things and various matters. So I'm not sure if this falls under a deficiency that would be considered, you know, in this plan or not. But this group, this population, is looking to move forward with as much independence as they possibly can, but they're typically not a driving population. And so they are going to need transportation. So I come tonight to say that if further things are done that involve stakeholder committees, we certainly would love to be part of that, because I think this population also is each year graduating from high school, moving into adulthood, and a number of folks throughout the county would fall into this category of trying to move forward with some form of independence in their lives and access to things. And so that's what I'm bringing before you tonight. I guess my question would be, among the transit recommendations, is this being addressed in this plan? Or would this still be considered, I don't even know if I'm using the right word, deficiency, where this is a population that, whose needs aren't yet being addressed by this plan?
So I think that we've talked about the micro-transit, but I'll, Preston, you're, Joel, will you come up and address it?
Let me say one other thing, too.
Sure, sure.
Ann Garrett will also be adding a second aspect of this in just a moment, too.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and you don't have to walk away if you've got more, so.
So shorter answer is yes. Maybe not directly, but it is. So transit is one of the primary focuses of this plan, and that's what we spoke about, multimodal transportation. We are, as we speak, we mentioned JCATs. They are attempting to and working to expand their micro-transit system, QuickRide as we speak. Hopefully, that will occur, and they would like to expand that service even more throughout the county. So with that, there will be that accessibility component to that as well. So that'll be short rides, you know, they're low-cost, and that's on-demand, that's an on-demand service. The plan actually addressed, we do address other modes of transit, whether it be a bus system, and it could be a, once again, an on-demand service as well, specifically looking specifically to assisting those with disabilities or those types of needs. But no, it's not overlooked at all.
Okay. And I will say, I was going to call you Jeff, Mr. Holland.
You're welcome to do that.
So one of the things, and actually one of the reasons that micro-transit intrigued me so much is conversations we had, seems like years and years ago, about this dream you had for housing and the problem of how do the residents get to work when they can't drive? So I think that's one of my motivating factors, is your persistence and your passion for making sure that all segments of our population are served, and it's not as easy as going to get a car and a driver's license, going to work. Some folks can't do that, some folks move here and have never driven before and still need to get back and forth. So I can't say we specifically target the audience you're talking about, but I think they would be touched by what we hope to develop in our plan. So thank you for your persistence.
I will say, I'll add one last comment, though. Mr. Law, you've already proven yourself to be an advocate for people with disabilities, so very grateful for that. I've seen the work that you've done in that area. I will add that at this moment in time, I'm not sure that we, I'm hoping JCATs will go back and address things further. Usually, you have to ask for a ride three days in advance. You have to pay $6 there and $6 back, I think. I'm not sure if it's six for both directions, but, you know, that really taps into the finances of those with disabilities who only just have a small amount of money they are working with each month. So there are pieces of this I would love to see still addressed with JCATs. They certainly are there, but at one point in time, I saw where they were available to help with trips to doctor's offices and back. But I'm not sure, I may be wrong, but I'm not sure if all these areas that I addressed tonight are areas for which you can get trips scheduled. If so, you're having to do it three days in advance before you...
Yeah, so I think the QuickRide, and I don't, somebody can correct me if I misspeak on this, but that is the on-demand now, because it used to be you had to schedule and you could get bumped at the last minute, so there was not consistent transportation to and from. So with the QuickRide program, I think it is $6 to and from, but I think it is now on-demand and more consistent so that somebody can actually get to work. And I think, you know, Mr. Harris had experienced that some in his former business, that there's issues with a lot of folks being able to get back and forth to work.
Yeah, at one point, JCATs had really two divisions, and the QuickRide is the newer portion of that, which is really app-driven with your phone, and you can schedule a ride really at any time. We could schedule a ride right now, and it's the $6 fee. The other division that they do, where they transport patients back and forth to doctor's offices, doctor's appointments, things like that, those are the ones that have to be made three days prior to that time. And that's where you need, you know, access to a wheelchair van or different things like that for different patients, depending on what their specific needs are. So you've got two different things, and the QuickRide is something that we've been working to expand. You know, we started as a pilot program in, really in Smithfield, I think, and then it went from Smithfield to Selma, and now we're trying to continue to push it out into other parts of the county. So that, you know, that's a, that is a very economical, and I know $6 is $6, but in dealing with employees in a previous business, that, you know, a cab was one price, and the regular division of JCATs, which was a three-day advanced schedule, that has been the best alternative thus far. And I've even heard of some employers that are even paying that $6 trip for their employees so that they have a meaningful way to get back and forth to work. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Is it where it ends up today? No, it's not, but I think we're going to keep expanding, keep working at it until we can provide, you know, transportation for all the citizens around the county that need it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Ann Garrett, and I live in Wake Forest, other side of the town. Thank you tonight for the opportunity to speak in regards to your transportation plan. I'm a resident of Wake Forest, but my daughter, who has Down syndrome, will soon be a resident of Johnston County. She's going to move into the My Forever Home, the intentional community that Jeff just spoke about in Smithfield. According to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, one of the key takeaways from the survey was that 97% of the folks do not use public transportation. So I might challenge that statistic and wonder, was it not just public transportation, but actually the specific type of transportation that the people had access to at that time? Wake Forest used to have a fixed bus loop that serviced residents, but only to specific predefined stops. However, within the past year, they invested in a micro-transit solution and started a pilot program. I should mention that they used funds from Campo to partially fund this pilot. The Go Wake Forest Transit Service is a micro-transit solution that is available to all Wake Forest residents, including those with disabilities. They even have vehicles equipped for those residents who use wheelchairs. The service is easy to use because it's very much like Uber. To request rides, residents use a phone, use an app on their phone, which my daughter has mastered, her phone. The rides are free, they're not $6 per destination, which is great because she has a very limited income. And so there's no cash to carry to pay the driver, which is great for her because she doesn't work with cash. She works with credit cards. But this, because it's free, she wouldn't have to call someone and pay by credit card over the phone, because I can't imagine that going very well, because sometimes she's hard to understand. It's also on-demand, so she doesn't have to schedule her ride three days in advance, which is helpful if she were sick and just needed to go to urgent care. Medicaid will pay for the doctor's visits, but only if you schedule them three days in advance. So I guess the sick visits don't count. Since starting the pilot almost a year ago, Wake Forest has reported great success with the program. With the fixed loop bus service, they were experiencing one to two riders per hour. Now they're up to 30 riders an hour. When they started, they had five vehicles, now they have 10. Emma Lynn in the Long Range Planning Office told... Emma Lynn, in the long-range planning office, told me they are very satisfied with the service and continue to receive positive feedback. So my ask for you tonight is to thoroughly consider this microtransit solution. What has proven to be very successful in one municipality can be expanded to another, not just for my daughter and those like her, but for those, for the able-bodied residents as well. Thanks again for tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Garrett?
I have a question. Are those rides all within Wake Forest?
Yes, and they'll do some in North Raleigh. Like, they, they do have a map, yeah.
Okay.
There's, you know, limited, but.
So, so what I think you have is, is a very similar thing of what we have, what we call QuickRide.
Okay. Is that different than J- JCATs?
Yeah, it is. It's administered by JCATs, but it's a different thing. It's, it's exactly what you're saying. There's an app on the phone.
Okay.
You can schedule it anytime. As a matter of fact, we did a test run here, and you could schedule, come pick you up at the courthouse, take you to lunch, bring you back. I mean, it's, that's, it's that easy. It's like, like Uber on steroids, I guess.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, i- it's just, it's still the $6. That's the big difference. And the difference from the Wake Forest system and, and our system is that they're running it in Wake Forest, and we're running it in Johnston County. And it's a, it is a massive county, so.
I thought so.
So are we, are we where we want to be? I don't think so, but I think we're, we're getting closer. But, but it's a very similar system to what you're talking about, and it does work very well. People have been super excited about it, and, you know, we'll have to try to see where the money could come from to get it down to where, I don't know if it can be zero or not. It's got to be paid for somehow. We'll have to figure that out, but.
And maybe if there's the newest grant that's paying for it, it seems like we had some, something similar the first year where it may have been subsidized by the DOT grant.
Well, it's, and, and honestly, at $6, it's still subsidized to a great degree, because that's, that's pretty, that's the cheapest thing we found, you know, compared to bus service or especially Uber or even a taxi, like a cab service.
Okay. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming down to see us in Johnston County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tonight. And I do believe that Josh Jensen, our JCAT's executive director, will be here at our next meeting on the 16th. So we'll just make sure he's prepared to talk some and update us on the QuickRide in addition to the, the other information he was going to provide, so. All right, any, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, any final comments by the Commissioners? All right, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for any further discussion.
You said we'd look at it up in the next meeting?
I mean, I would think that traditionally, we don't vote on something when we first hear it, so I think that the 16th would give us time to take a look at it, offer up comments, and then put it on the agenda to adopt then.
Is it the 15th or the 16th?
Uh, oh, yeah, 15th, sorry. I, I, I'm --
We're on a, you're on the Tuesday schedule now.
I'm glad you already had to hit me out tonight, but yeah, so.
Do you want a motion to take it under advisement? Or just?
We just, we just add it to the agenda.
Just add it to the agenda.
Yeah, we just add it to the agenda.
Good deal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we continue with public hearings. These are, or this one is on rezoning. We did have one that was postponed to our next meeting. And now we have one case 25-04, a rezoning petition. And Preston, if you would, come forward and present the background and offer up the time for discussion.
Yes, sir. So case 25-04's petition, rezon, 94 hundredths of an acre, uh, acres of a 1.57 acre tract at 477 Hatchet Road in micro township from agricultural residential to general business conditional zoning. District owner and applicant Cassandra and Jared Bridges. Conditional zoning request has a specific use requested, and this is an animal boarding facility. Existing surrounding land uses are seen there agricultural residential and use for residential and agricultural purposes. Traffic concerns for Hatchet Road, there is, are no counts available for Hatchet Road at this location, and it does not appear, or Hatchet Road does not appear on a comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. With regard to our land use plan, this area is located or designated as an agricultural area, future land use place type, which is intended to remain rural while allowing some residential uses at very low densities. You will see in your packet, there is the, not only the staff report with the listed conditions or proposed conditions, you will also see a site plan, which I believe the applicant does have a potential modification to that this evening. But those are available for your viewing, and I am glad to answer any questions you may have about this, about this case at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? All right. All right, and I guess it is time for the applicant to come forward. And if you would, state your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Cassandra Bridges, and yes, I'm the owner of 477 Hatchet Road. I'm going to pass these out, the modifications.
If you would give them to you.
Yes. My name is Cassandra Bridges, and together with my husband Jared, we are the owners of 477 Hatchet Road in Selma. I am the founder of Cassie's Critter Care, a local pet setting business established in 2017 and formalized in 2019, providing pet boarding, training, drop-in visits at clients' houses, and dog walking services. Today, I respectfully request your approval for rezoning change on my property to allow for the operation of a small dog kennel, enabling me to meet the growing demand for professional pet care in our community while addressing concerns raised by my neighbors. I want to first say I'm sorry I'm, I was unable to get these to you prior with conversations and how they happened. It just became late. But I will go over those small changes that happened. So Cassie's Critter Care services about 150 clients in a year, offering, do you need another one?
Yeah, we just hold on, let's get all the papers.
Yeah, like.
My ADHD is just going crazy.
I have more if I need more to. Okay. So Cassie's Critter Care services approximately 150 clients in a year, offering reliable and compassionate care for pets while their owners are at work or away on vacation. In October of 2020, we purchased the home from Brett and Megan Phillips. We recognized the property's potential to offer safe and home boarding to the spacious one and a half acre lot. Rezoning will allow us to construct a small kennel, enhancing our ability to deliver a home-like boarding experience that clients seek. This facility will address the increasing demand for professional pet care in Johnston County, create a controlled, well-maintained environment for up to 20 to 30 dogs, enable, ensuring safety and comfort, contribute to the local economy by sustaining my small business and potentially creating part-time jobs for contractors looking for, during peak seasons, and align with the, the county's goal for supporting local entrepreneurship and community services. Currently, with my day-to-day schedule, my typical operating hours are from 6:30 a.m. until 8:45 p.m., with occasional late pickups as late as 9:30 p.m. During busy holiday periods, because even though I have contractors to help with out of the house visits, I do still go out to help with those visits, resulting in clients needing to pick up later, or a few people at a time if the timing overlaps. We focus on creating a safe, clean, and welcoming environment for both the pets and their owners. A little more personal, but still important to the layout of the land and the neighborhood relations. When we first moved in, as neighbors do, we went and greeted our, we went and greeted everyone. When we met with Angel and Warren Phillips and told them the plan for the land, the relationship that could have been was no more. I tried on multiple occasions to let them know my plans or invite their ideas. The moment those talks stopped was when he, Warren, invited me to his home, showed me the empty lot, and told me he did not want to lose his view. I reminded him I wasn't going to put in something that was an eyesore. And as with building a dream, I thought the process, and through the process of best placement, access, soundproofing, and so much more, we found that due to the placement of our drain field for our house and septic system, we were unable to use our driveway for client access or parking because we were unable to turn left into the field, making it unusable for parking spots in that direction. That is when Warren and I spoke about him putting in a driveway one day and me explaining I would help with those shared costs as I wanted my clients to use that driveway as well, due to the drain field. We are committed through to working with our county and neighbors to making the proposed access a solution that is safe, convenient, and compliant with all regulations that would fit that easement use. Now, five years later, when I noticed a survey company outback marking the property, I spoke with Warren and got Brett's number. That way I could also speak to him and his wife about any concerns they may have about a potential business. I wanted to make sure that my neighbors felt heard, as this building, as Warren said, it would block his view. Regarding the concerns from the prior meeting, when we first moved to our home on Hatchet Road, I was still learning the rules of where you can dispose of dog waste, and so, yes, I did use the field tree line as a natural decomposition area. We now, though, for the last few years, take it to the convenience centers every few days as needed. As far as the barking dogs, I do my very best to schedule drop-in and pickups around times where I can put the dogs inside to limit the amount of barking. As far as clients coming at all hours of the night comment, I schedule my clients to pick up or drop off as early as 6:30 in the morning to as late as 8:45. This is to fit around my schedule. Now, there are times, as I said earlier, where I have to go out, I have to pet sit clients at their house, and I do allow clients to pick up when I return around 9:00, 9:30 p.m. This is rare, though. Other vehicle activity may include personal visitors such as family and friends attending events, birthday children holidays, and such which are unrelated to business operations. Going more off that, this Labor Day weekend, it was busy. I had clients picking up from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. and only had one client at a time in my driveway, resulting in no traffic congestion. There was concern regarding the end of the driveway toward the back of the property, but you'll see that we did curve it towards the end to meet the 25-foot easement. We made a slight change to where it would curve at the end, so that way, any future homeowners, they could still get to the back of their property. We would also put a private property sign towards the end to signify the business traffic does not go that far. There was also a concern regarding we would be driving over the water and power line for Brett's helm that they are building. That you heard on the July 15th after the meeting, I heard those concerns, and I thought long and hard about where, if it was even possible to use our driveway. As far as the drain field, again, though, it is not possible, and there's not enough room to put a third driveway, as there's not 500 feet, the driveways are not 500 feet apart. I sat down with Brett Phillips on August 8th to discuss moving the water and power line to the other side of the driveway. That is, the driveway that's already currently in the easement to avoid anybody driving over in the future if this was to go forward. I spoke with Wake Electric, who said that it would be no issue, and gave me a quote to change the, the power line. I was unable to speak with the water company, but found out on Thursday, August 28th, they were digging to be able to put that water line down, to which it's still, there's still been plenty of time to move and prepare for that water line to be dug on the other side of the gravel if it was a big concern. As of current today, it is still being placed, and there's still a hole in the easement. As far as the concern of the kids being able to walk to their grandparents' safety, I was post-putting in the sidewalk with a fence along the tree line to the left of the property, separated and by the fence and illuminated by outdoor lighting, to prevent current client vehicles from entering that area. Should this property be sold in the future?
You keep going, you're good.
Okay.
Technical difficulties.
The kennel could be repurposed as a workshop or similar structure, ensuring no loss in property value for my neighbors or I. As a responsible business owner, I am committed to all dogs being supervised at all times by trained staff. Dogs will be grouped thoughtfully based on temperament and compatibility to prevent unnecessary barking. Dense trees and landscaping will be planted around the property to buffer and reduce any noise from barking dogs. Superior fencing and safety protocols will be in place. Outdoor play will be limited to specific hours to minimize the noise, and all clients for pickup and drop-off and meet and greets will be scheduled in advance to avoid congestion on the driveway. All outdoor pathways will be cleaned up regularly and transported to the dump every day to every three days, depending on the need to ensure a clean and sanitary environment. The facility will be kept clean and well-maintained to preserve appearance. Since the opening of my business, I've been committed to operating in a way that benefits both my clients and the surrounding community. The growing demand for pet care in Johnston County underscores that need for this rezoning. Approving this request will allow my business to continue providing a valuable service fostering community trust through responsible operations. Denying this request risks limiting access to safe local pet boarding, potentially pushing clients to less regulated alternatives outside of the county. My track record of compassionate care, serving 150 clients annually, and adapting to my neighbors' feedback demonstrates my commitment to operating in a way that benefits both my clients and the community. I respectfully ask for your support in approving the zoning change on 477 Hatchet Road for the dog kennel. This project will meet the critical community need by addressing neighbor concerns through a thoughtful design and ongoing collaboration. I am committed to working with the county and residents to ensure a safe, compliant, and community-friendly facility. I welcome your questions, and I am prepared to discuss further refinements to secure your support. Thank you for your time.
All right, any, any questions for Cassie at this time?
I'm still trying to compare the two maps right now.
So it looks like it just curves.
Yeah, so the back part, at the very back to the left, curves. Um, oh, Lord.
And I see the arrows were added in the private property.
So, yeah, the, so the, that part curves to meet that 25-foot easement towards the back of the property that they have. And then these two lines, I'm shaking.
That's not only.
These lines right there would be the water and power line to move it onto the other side of the gravel driveway, so that way there would be no need for running it over, any repairs, damages, or anything of the sort. We did add, of course, the, the arrows to show the flow of traffic and how my clients would go, but then where Brett and Megan and anybody else that goes on their land can continue straight. And then the last thing that we changed, two other things, the septic part for both to show where our septic is and our drain field is, and then where the, the building's septic and drain field will flow into. And then more of a minor, but we added like in the trees, that there's a different trees that we would put into more denser tree to be able to block any view, noise, things like that.
All right, I did have one question. So I, I saw 60 foot on the, on your property side, it said a 60-foot easement.
Yes, sir.
But it says 25 at the back.
Yes.
So where does, what's the?
So when we, when we were buying the property, prior to that, it was rezoned 60-foot by Brett, Warren. They rezoned it. We bought the property that way, and so they rezoned that part, and they owned the back three acres or lots. And so that's where their 25-foot stays, but had moved it to 60.
So they moved it to 60 before you bought it?
Prior to putting it on the market, yes, sir.
So that actually extends most of your, what you show is driveway and parking? Is that?
Say that one more time.
I said, so the 60-foot actually extends into your, what you're showing is your driveway, and I don't know if it goes all the way to your parking, but.
So the 60-foot is that dash line that's from the side, and so the dash line, that's the full 60 feet. And so, um.
I got you, got you.
Yeah, and so then our dry, our parking lot would be just on the outside of that.
So that's the one that goes at the back of the parking spaces? Is that the dash line you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. Uh huh. This dash line right here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the 60-foot easement. So, then our parking would be just on the outside of it. And then, of course, leaving plenty of room for the flow of traffic inward would be, minimum is 20 feet for two cars to come in, and that's why we put it for 24, to make it a little bit more room, safer, and such.
So, the driveway that goes back where it says private property sign, that's not going to be for your customers' use, that's just to access to another person's property?
That is for their property, yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
So, your customers will come in and out the same driveway, just go in and park and then go back out?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the house that's over there where it says neighbor's concrete driveway, is that your house? Is that?
So, the concrete driveway part, that is off of our land. It's actually, but right next to that is our house, the, I don't know, 15 S F S D. But that, that little, like, L, if you would, that's our house.
Okay. So, where it says track number two, is that one? Am I understanding that right? I might be confused.
Yeah, so, yeah, that driveway goes.
Okay, okay, but this is your house?
Yes.
It just looks, yeah, it looks, it looks like it goes to their house.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're throwing out.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
So, let me ask you, so, the, at the planning board meeting, I thought there was some objection to the folks that live behind you using the same driveway that you're using, is that?
Correct. They just, they don't want to use the same driveway for safety concerns. And so, I feel as if I have addressed those safety concerns, one, it being a wider driveway, but also, two, showing the flow of traffic, giving clients the access to, you know, advanced scheduling, so that way, we do our best to avoid peak hours.
Okay. And the septic field that's shown for the actual kennel, is that in place now, or is it to be installed?
To be installed, if ever, yes.
So, that would be the track number one drain field. Is that right?
Yeah, the, the upper right.
Yeah. Well, that, the upper right is your house.
It's for your house.
That's your current, that's the one you're using right now, right?
No, so, our current one is the square right next to?
Use the pointer, please.
Oh, okay. So, yours is actually on the?
That is our current, yes, and that's why we cannot drive and use our driveway for the building. And then, the upper one to the right would be the?
The only way you could do that is you slid, well, actually, you'd take it in your driveway. I see what you're saying, that complic, it's complicated.
I'm very, can you pull up the G I S, because I'm looking at G I S, I'm very confused on what they're saying, because I'm not seeing, maybe I'm crazy.
No, no, it's confusing in G I S.
I thought I had a good handle on it, and then when she said, no, that's not her house, I was like, well, now I'm lost again.
So, that is, that's our house right there.
Get your point, which?
Yeah.
And by the way, you're doing a much better job of pointing than I would ever do.
Okay, so, I'm not crazy, and you, that's their house. Okay, that's what I was looking at, and then when you said to the left, I was like, okay, now I'm confused again, I'm sorry.
Depending on, yeah, I guess which way you're looking, but yes.
So, where they're going to build is right here.
This one's our house, that's our driveway.
Be about right there.
And then, that is our land and all that, so, yeah.
And what's drain field serves your house?
Current septic drain field is right there.
That one.
Could have come up here and built a building right here.
The one in the upper right-hand corner is for the business?
Would be for the business, yes, sir.
I guess that's where I started getting lost, I was tracking into.
Yeah, there's one.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But your driveway, but you say you use the driveway now, though, where the proposed tree line is, right?
Uh, yes, because I do the boarding in my home.
Okay.
And so, the clients?
So, you're driving there?
Yes, the clients use my driveway currently.
I think what's most leading is that it says track one above that septic field next to the?
So, we, we are track one, and the business would be track two.
This is actually?
Yeah, they're, they would split the property.
Yeah, track one here, and this is track two.
Any other questions? And I guess this is my question, I don't know, you were, you said you just had time to pull the new drawing together, but has staff seen this to make any comments?
So, I spoke with Brastin Wednesday. No, I spoke with him Tuesday, I think it was. We discussed the, the needs for the changes. I spoke with the survey company on that same day, and then, we made the changes. I told Brastin, you know, that we made the changes, I need copies, do I need, kind of thing.
But he hasn't, when did you, when did you see him?
We haven't seen it yet. We haven't seen all the changes, but the changes do reflect some conversation we did have.
Okay, but you, but you saw it, same time we just?
Yes.
We just saw that and had had a chance to, to review it with the, other than verbally?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a recommendation that we table this request until staff has ample opportunity to review this and study, especially since they just received it same time we did.
All right.
Should we hear any other people that come to the meeting tonight?
I'm fine with seconding that motion, but if there are people in the audience, I would like to hear their concerns.
Yeah, so, I'm not a look at count, is, are we going to have to go through all this again? Because I guess there's some possibility a planning, planning board may need to hear this again.
Depending on, depending on the changes, if there are major modifications, and without having reviewed it, we don't know. If there's major modifications, it would have to go back to the planning board. If it's, if it's not, then it could come back to you, so, there is a possibility. But you can handle it however you want to, I mean, the public is hearing, unfortunately, it's open. My, my concern is that the map just got presented tonight, and so, the people in the audience haven't had the benefit of reviewing the map either. Now, there may have been conversations about it and that sort of thing, but you don't have a complete packet, I guess, is my concern.
Correct, okay. So, would we need then to, at least for tonight, based on the, the motion, is continue until our September 15th meeting?
Yes, and then that would give staff the opportunity to review it, to make a determination as to whether it needed to go back down, come back up, or whether or not it could be, it could be heard that night.
Yeah, or if planning board needs to go back and see it again.
Yeah.
So, a date certain in September would work, but I just want everybody to know that there is a possibility, depending on what the changes are and that sort of thing, that it would have to go back to the planning board, so it possibly would not be heard on the fifth page, but we can communicate that with all of the, just whatever, that sort of things.
Okay.
So, in other words, you might have to table it again.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't Brastin reflect that, that they had talked about, and that the written changes reflected what they had talked about, he was aware of?
Yes, sir. Most of everything we're seeing here has reflected that. I'm not sure to the same level of detail, would still do have some concerns with the buffer, but, I mean, that's something, I mean, we can work out. I don't, looking at what's being presented, just at a, at a cursory glance, it doesn't appear that, I mean, I don't think there would be enough substance there to require to go back to the planning board at this point.
All right, so, back to the motion to continue at our September 15th meeting. Do I have a second on that?
I said, yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, or any discussion on that?
Do we need to still leave the public hearing open, though, for, to hear the comments?
If we're continuing, do I need to, does that, I mean, the public hearing is continued automatically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then, we wouldn't have to do the notices all over again, and?
Okay.
All those sorts of things, but certainly, Brastin will communicate with the folks that have communicated with them, but we don't have to republish, republish, and all that sort of things that you're table in the public hearing.
And I'm not suggesting that we're delaying the project, I just think in fairness to the applicant and to those who might be here to speak on this, on this for or against, that they hadn't had an opportunity to see the latest plan, and so, I think it's, it's fair to everyone to table it, and let's come back and, everybody have a chance to look at it, and come back and make a decision.
What, to Michelle?
September 15th, 16th meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Monday.
I say with confidence.
Monday. I'm sensitive to the, to the fact of people, you know, spent the time to come out here tonight, so I'm going to go to this motion, I'm ready to move forward with some decision.
I was just getting ready to say to Michelle's point, and, and taking that consideration, they, if there are people, I'm assuming, here to speak with regards to this, they may bring up things that we need to take into consideration with this new drawing, is the only thing I was saying, and out of respect for those that have already come, that may not be able to come on the 15th, I just assume here what they have to say, so if it's going to give us more to think about, we, we would know it, instead of having to do this again two weeks from now, that was my only thoughts.
We're going to have to do some of it again two weeks from now, regardless.
Yeah. I just didn't know if they'd bring up things that we hadn't thought of, yeah, questions or concerns or not.
Well, we won't know if they bring up something that should have been addressed by the new plan, because they hadn't seen the new plan.
Yeah, I'm assuming nobody out here, it's, it's plans until tonight, so?
When Brett and I spoke, this is the, from Trueland Surveying, when I spoke with him after the meeting from July 15th, I went to Brett and I showed him this, and he and I spoke with it. Yes, I did not go to Warren and them, but Brett is moving in behind us, building behind us, and he was the main concern for sharing that driveway.
All right. The only way I know to settle is we have a motion and a second, and we'll call for the vote, all those in favor of tailing until September the 15th at our six o'clock meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
All right, we will table it to the 15th.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so, the next case has been, actually, till October the 6th, and that brings us to manager report and comments. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to talk with you about the Buffalo Road Parallel Force Main Project. As you know, you recently approved that project contingent upon DWI approval, and DWI is the Division of Water Infrastructure. It just occurred to me that I might be the only person that knew what that meant.
Thank you, it was that term this morning, and I thought we needed a pause also. Yeah, I was like, I don't know what kind of DWI that is.
Yes, the Division of Water Infrastructure.
I hear what that means.
The engineer who currently practices on the board, knew what that meant.
Thank you.
So, we, we've been working on this project for some time, and, and as we have discussed, and Ms. Farmer talked with you about this project is to divert wastewater from the towns of Selma and Pine Level to the 210 wastewater treatment facility. And so, we've been working on this project a really, really long time, and it's a very important project for resiliency in our system and to make sure that we're meeting our obligations under some contracts and, and all of those sorts of things. And so, we've been working through this project, and, and this project, hence the name, is, is located along Buffalo Road, and the intent is to put a 16-inch force main essentially parallel with Buffalo Road, but because we do need some area in which to, to do the installation of this, we've had to require some easements for this project. We have currently negotiated the conveyances of all of these necessary right-of-ways except for four. We're, we're still talking through all of those, but given the fact that we've got some significant timing issues with regards to this project, and the need of this project for public safety and welfare, and to improve the public sewer system, I'm asking you to consider adopting a resolution for condemnation to acquire those, portions of those four properties, and, and those properties are located at 1553 Buffalo Road, 1791 Buffalo Road, 1755 Buffalo Road, and 2117 Buffalo Road. But I don't want to give the impression that we're, we're taking an entire piece of property, it is truly just a public utility easement, and, for example, on 2117 Buffalo Road, we're talking about a public utility easement of 683 square feet, so, we're not, we're not talking about a lot of property that we need, but we, we don't have enough room in the right-of-way, so we need a little bit of additional property. And so, in adopting this resolution, you would give us the authority to move forward with condemnation if it's necessary, and the way that that process looks is, under the law, we're required to send what's called a 30-day notice, and if we can't get it worked out within that period of time, then we would have the authority to move forward with, with eminent domain. And, and again, eminent domain is always a last resort for any project that Johnston County does. We were, we were talking about, Shandra and I were talking about this a little bit earlier today. I don't think we've filed one of these in a really, really long time, because we try very hard to work these out, but given the, given the time constraints that we have on this project, I respectfully request that you consider adopting this resolution and allowing us to move forward with the process, with the hope that we can negotiate a resolution, but if not, that we have the authority to move forward with eminent.
So, the timing and the importance of it, right?
Yes, sir. Those are the two key factors.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution and move forward.
All right, we have a motion, we don't have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is it understood that the primary point is a difference in the opinion of the value?
Yes, sir.
Of the area?
Yes, sir. That's the, that's the biggest point of, of contention, is the, is the price per acre, essentially, with regards to these four parcels.
And the purpose of this line is to transport?
It's to divert flow, wastewater flow from the town of Selma and the town of Pine Level to the new 210 wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Yes, it's not for a private project or?
That's right.
Anything like that, it's, it's part of our capital improvements plan, and this will provide some relief and, and move some of that flow to the new treatment facility.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, anything else? All right. Board reports and comments. Vice Chairman Harris, I'll start with you, and Commissioner Godwin gets last dibs.
All right, thank you, sir. I don't have anything else to add for the past this morning.
All right. I'm good.
I would just like to say, you know, it's really exciting to see so many of these plans come across our desk, like, seeing how close we are now on a comprehensive land use plan. I just feel like, we talked a lot this morning about a lot of big changes that have come and have needed to happen in the county, and I'm just, I'll say it again, I'm just really proud of this board, I feel like we are continuing to move some of these large, masterful plans forward, and I'm, I'm just excited for what's to come for our county.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Mr. Stevens as well, it's really exciting time to be on this board, and I'm excited and grateful to be a part and humbled by being a part. I also did want to mention, I had a phone call this past week, we always brag on our county employees, and this is what another one was, they were bragging on a county employee, and nobody knows that I was about to say this, so, I don't know who it was, but, so it was in an employee vehicle, and they actually got behind a tractor on 210, and they actually put their hazards on and helped that farmer get to their next field on a busy, shut highway, and so, I had a phone call, a person got behind the tractor in the motorcade, just about, and they just said, it was really neat to see a Johnston County employee helping that farmer out, and they're like, they don't have a clue which one it was, or who it was, or anything like that, they're like, it was just really neat that a person that did not have to do that as part of their day, helped that farmer out. And I don't even know who that farmer was doing anything, but I just got that phone call this week, so it was just really neat, other people recognizing our county employees as well.
That's awesome, good. Commissioner Stowoff?
Mr. Chairman, I know this morning, a number of our colleagues spoke about what they learned at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in Greenville, sort of, week before last. I was unable to attend that because I was participating with our Johnston County 48 Shooting Sports Club at their Eastern Regional Tournament down in Terrell County. And we took 15 kids down there, I'm pleased to say that all, all of these kids qualified to go to state tournament?
Awesome.
Which means they either received a medal, or they qualified in the top five in their respective disciplines. But I did? But I did, do want to say that some of our juniors were the youngest shooters, they earned a bronze team medal in recurve archery. Our senior teams won a silver, silver medal in muzzleloader. We have a senior individual who participated, and he, he's been to Nationals four times. And he had high score, took the gold medal in compound archery in the sport class. And we also, he took a silver medal in 22 pistol, and we had teams that qualified in 22 rifle, and we had two seniors that qualified in the overall scores to go to shotgun. So virtually every discipline, we've got somebody participating at state tournament.
Oh, great.
There was 340 participants overall, and 950 participants in the various disciplines, so every team may have did more than one discipline, so it was a full day. But it was a very good day, everybody had fun, and I want to, again, thank this body for their help in, in giving us a, what will be hopefully a permanent home, we can do all of our program out of the archery site at the landfill. And the folks at the landfill, we met with them earlier this week, they said they'll probably start moving soil to build the necessary burns and backstops, probably today. I haven't checked with them to see if they would, but they said they would try to give it, go this week. So I'm hoping that once that's done, we can get everything else in place, and at least by the time we start the next year's enrollment, we'll be shooting there, if not by December.
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Do you stand out there with an apple on your head yet, or...
Not quite. Maybe with one of our national shooters, I would...
Okay, all right, all right. All right, Commissioner Godwin.
Bill, we commend you for doing that.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you.
You know, Commissioner Stevens talked about all of the projects we've got going on, and sometimes when we feel overwhelmed, just consider this, Terrell County has less than 10,000 people in the entire county.
And it is the middle of nowhere.
Yep. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was going to, and I think I said this last time, that we were, we sat at a table with the folks from Gates County, 10,260. They know exactly how many they have, and we were also set with counties that were losing population, and, and I think I said this last time too, but it is interesting to hear that schools are a problem, whichever direction you're going, either you don't have enough schools, or you have too much schools. So it was interesting to hear some of the, the shared problems there. I do not have anything else to report. We do have a need to go into closed session, there will not be any action taken after the closed session, so, Commissioner Harris, do you have the...
Yes, sir. I, Mr. Chairman, I move the board go into closed session for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3, and to establish or instruct staff concerning the negotiation of, of the price and terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a5. I need a second.
Second. There you go. Now, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go into closed session in a minute, clear the room, and thank those who are here, that were here tonight, and those who watched.